Good evening and welcome to City Council's study session of Tuesday, April 18th, 2023. There are two agenda items, the first being discussion regarding the proposed FYE 2024, City of Norman Budget, General Fund, and Special Revenue Funds. Mr. Francisco, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, members of council. I am pleased to start to present to you the city manager's proposed budget for fiscal year that will start on July 1st of 2023 and end on June 30th of 2024. So yes, the fiscal year ending 2024, while it seems a long way off, is upon us. The budget document that you received last week, I'm sure you've memorized it by now, but it contains a lot of information, a lot of useful information, a lot of things are in there. It's not just a financial document, it is a financial plan in that the budget is a forward-looking document for the fiscal period. It is also a policy document, and all the major financial policies that the council adopts related to all of the city's operations, when you adopt the budget, you are also re-adopting those financial policies. All of the operations of the city are discussed in summary form in those detailed pages of the budget documents. So if you are any representative or citizen of the city, or anyone from the outside is interested in learning more about the operations of any individual division or cost center of the city, you can find information in the budget document, and we'll talk about that. So it is a public communications device, and everything that's in the budget is an open record. So we are glad to share all of this information. It is posted online. When council has adopted the final budget, it will also be posted online on the city's website. So again, as you're reviewing the information, feel free to give us a call if you have any questions, anything that you see that you don't understand or that needs to be corrected, just give us a call, and we'll make sure those things get done. And before I move on, I do want to recognize our budget staff. Over here to my far right is Jacob Huckabee, our budget technician. Here behind me is Kim Kaufman, our budget manager. They do the lion's share of the work in putting all of this information together for you. So again, they deserve all of the credit for what you see before you. Where you see anything that's wrong, they deserve all of the blame.
That's what teamwork's all about.
Understand that this is the city manager's proposed budget, and the format that we go through is the same format that is prescribed by state statute whereby the executive branch of government presents a proposed budget to the governing body, that's you, the city council. Any changes that you make to the city manager's proposed budget before you adopt the budget has to be done by a formal vote on amendment of the council. So as we go along in the budget process, where you see things that you'd like to see taken out or added, anything that is a financial change, you have to propose as a formal amendment that will be voted on by the council as a whole. This is where we are in the budget process. As you see, it's kind of a year-round process. We started back in November when the council said, yeah, we're okay with this process going forward with some minor changes, and we made those back in the fall. We had a mid-year budget review in January. You'll recall that you directed some additional appropriations to the rainy day fund and some other things to be done at that mid-year budget review. We had capital budget retreats in November and in February. Some changes that you suggested there have been included here. Now we are in the presentation of the city manager's proposed budget, and the city manager's budget will be presented in three study sessions. This first one, we're talking about the general fund and the special revenue fund, so really the general governmental operations of the city. In two weeks, we'll talk about the capital budget, those long-term things, and we'll define what a capital function is opposed to the operating budget. And then on May the 16th, we'll focus on the enterprise funds. There are public budget hearings scheduled for next council meeting on April the 25th, and again on May the 23rd. And then the budget will be considered for final adoption on May the 13th. And as is discussed in your budget document and the city manager's letter, you must by statute adopt the budget in advance of the start of the fiscal year. It doesn't have to be exactly what's proposed by the city manager, but you do have to adopt a budget before the start of the fiscal year. As you're reading through the budget documents, what you'll find is that they're laid out kind of from beginning to end, from the most summarized information to the most detailed information. And what we're kind of highlighting here is the tab pages that you see there, those sections that you see. We would especially draw your attention to two sections at this early stage, first being the city manager's letter. It's about 17 pages with a lot of pictures and stuff in there, so it's really not that hard to read.
You always have lots of them.
We keep color crayons handy.
But again, I would stress that you should read that first. And then you'll see underlying down there, we have the financial summary section on page 54 through 116. That is where information is given at the fund summary level for each of the city's 26 funds. And at a summary level, you can find out everything that you really need to know about all of those funds of the city in those pages. There's also community profile information, background demographic information, and benchmark comparisons that show Norman in comparison to cities in our state and in our area of similar population. And again, it shows that Norman is a very small government for a city our size in population, and certainly for a city our size in land area. There's an overview section that is summarized in graphical information on everything that's in the budget. I know that we had some requests that we give information, not in so much numerical or tabular format, but in pictures and graphical information. So that is therefore you're really in that overview section. Those financial policies that you adopt when you adopt the budget are laid out in the financial policy section, pages 34 through 53. It also includes the verbatim Oklahoma Municipal Budget Act. And again, that is the statutory background for everything that we do related to the budget, where the city of Norman re-adopts those statutes when you adopt the budget. Again, if you're having trouble sleeping, I would suggest that you read the municipal budget act in detail. But again, that is the law that applies to everything that we do. Moving then into the detailed information for all of the departmental operations, that is given on pages 117 through 457. So there are organization charts for every department of the city. There are goals and objectives and mission statements that summarize everything that those departments are doing. So again, if all you're interested in is CDBG, you can find information there. If all you're interested in is animal welfare, just go to the page that talks about the animal welfare division, and there is a table of contents that will quickly get you there. But again, if you just need some information on how to find what you're looking for, feel free to give Kim or Jacob or myself a call, and we'll tell you what page to thumb to to find what you're looking for. This is a tabular format of the various funds of the city, and they're laid out in the fund types. So you see that there are governmental funds, that is what you see there in red. It shows the departments of the general fund. It shows in blue the special revenue funds. By definition, the special revenue funds are those funds where the operations of those functions are separated out into a separate fund because there is some legal restriction on how the revenues that are accounted for in that fund can be spent. You cannot be using those funds for other things, so they are in a special revenue fund. But in some cases, the special revenue funds do not generate enough money from those revenue sources to pay for all of the services that are being provided in that function, so there may be a subsidy from the general fund or from some other area to that special revenue fund, but they are separated out. And we'll talk about those special revenue funds this evening. The enterprise funds, as we talked about, are going to be the third study session, but those are the functions of the city that operate as a sort of a separate conglomerate business subject to the city. Think of the city as kind of a business conglomerate. We're the city umbrella, but under the city's umbrella, just as Google owns YouTube, the city owns a water utility. And understand it is very important that those functions be separated out because unlike the governmental functions that are provided to everyone and that cannot be denied to anyone, the enterprise functions of the city are there to serve a specific set of customers, and they are paid for by user fees charged just to the customers. And if those customers don't pay their user fees, those services can be denied, they can be cut off. If you don't pay your water bill, your water service is going to get cut off. You can't do that with streets, okay? The streets are open, the parks are open for everybody to enjoy, therefore they're paid for with tax money. There are capital funds that you see there, and again, those are for longer-lived projects of the city, paying for buildings or streets or bridges and those sorts of things. Unlike all of the other funds of the city, they are not fiscal in nature. They do not end at the end of a given fiscal year because a lot of times, those projects take more than one year to complete, so they are separated out into capital funds that So summaries of those financial policies that you adopt when you adopt the budget. When you adopt the budget, you appropriate all of the funds that can by definition be reasonably expected to be generated during the course of the fiscal year. You appropriate those funds and allocate them to various functions. And understand that that is council's real legal authority over the financial operations of the city. When you appropriate money, you take money out of what I call the savings account and put it into the checking account. And only council can do that. Only the governing body by the municipal budget act can appropriate money. But once you have appropriated money, taken it out of the savings account and putting it into the checking account, it is no longer under your direct purview. It is under the purview of the city manager and the various departments of the city. So just understand that appropriation act that you do when you adopt the budget and as you do throughout the course of the year, that is your financial responsibility. Every fund of the city must have a positive fund balance, must have at least $1 positive fund balance in that individual fund. We cannot deficit spend, unlike the federal government. Okay? We must have a positive fund balance in every fund of the city. We do five-year forecasts. Those are just formula-based, and we'll talk about those formula as we move along in the night, but just understand that those are just projections. We were actually taken to task some years ago because a council member looked back five years ago on where we projected we would be today, five years ago. We were way off. And understand that in a lot of cases, our goal is to make sure that we're way off. If we are projecting that the revenues are going to grow like this and the expenditures are going to grow like that, which means that in the future we're going to have negative fund balances in some or all of these funds, we have to correct course. We have to make changes, and that's what that long-term projection is intending to do, to make sure that what we're projecting does not come to reality. So that's why it's important. If it looks like we're going to be okay, then we can kind of stay on the course that we're on. But a lot of times, it will show that we should not and cannot stay on the course that we're on. The levelized rate policies are something that is of particular concern right now because in most of the major enterprise funds of the city, you are violating your levelized rate policies right now. Your levelized rate policies, as we'll see, will show that you should have positive fund balances in those enterprise funds going forward, and right now, you do not. You're violating those policies, and we'll talk about what we can do to make sure that that does not come to fruition. The net revenue stabilization fund, or the rainy day fund of the city, is one that draws a lot of attention and sometimes a lot of misunderstanding. We talked about that mid-year review that is mandated by the rainy day fund ordinance that we do once the annual financial report has been adopted by council, and we see if we are meeting our targeted reserves in the general fund and in the rainy day fund, and if council wants to make a deposit to the rainy day fund, and you did this year. But you see what those policies require. We must have at least a 3% operational reserve in the general fund and a 1% emergency reserve fund. As we've talked about in the finance committee, we hope that we will never have to draw on that 1% emergency reserve, but it is there. It is appropriated and allocated money so that if an emergency comes up, unlike the tornado that happened in February, that you're not supposed to be having tornadoes in February, but we have appropriated money to respond to that without having to ask council to appropriate more money. Yes, ma'am.
Is there a reason why the max is 6%?
By prudent policy, you don't want to have too much money in reserve because that would indicate that you should be providing more services with the money that the citizens have provided to you. So that is the policy the council has adopted by that ordinance, that the total reserve should not exceed 10% before you start to look at some areas that you should be providing more services. Remember, they're governments, and this is the reason for the difference between governmental accounting and for-profit accounting, is that in the for-profit sector, there is a profit motive. And if you're making a lot of money, then you're returning a lot of money to your stockholders. But our stockholders are the people. And if we are bringing in too much money, in particular from the taxes, then that would indicate that we should be paving some more streets or building some more parks or something like that, instead of just making more profit. That is determined to be a bad thing by council policy and by prudent financial practice. One thing I would point out is that council has never appropriated any money out of the rainy day fund. We've had a lot of emergencies, but we have had funds on hand, and the professionalism in our various departments, that we have been able to respond to those emergencies within the allocated funds of the city, transferring money around. Instead of your job today being patching potholes, your job today is to get lambs out of the street, that sort of thing, okay? But we have been able to, without ever having to appropriate money out of the rainy day fund, to respond to the many emergencies that we've had. Yes, sir.
How long have we had rainy day fund?
I believe it was originally adopted in, let's see, the original ordinance was 10/11, so I'm going to say it was in 2010.
And so since then, it's just been accumulating?
I wouldn't say it's been accumulating because we have, we originally set aside money to meet that original mandated reserve, and what has happened since then, it's a moving target that increases as the expenditure level of the general fund increases, but it's not a big old chunk. It's more like what you did mid-year this year, where you're going to have to deposit another $200,000. It's not like you're going to have to deposit $2 million or something like that in order to meet that mandated reserve.
There's a healthy balance in there.
Yes, sir. Okay, so turning to this year's budget, and I have a theme for every year's budget, and this year's, it's weird, it's different, it's unique. And what I themed it is the best of times and the worst of times. It is really a tale of two cities. Yes, I'm a Charles Dickens fan, and I'm not going to start reciting the first page of The Tale of Two Cities, but it really does apply because, you know, historically speaking, our general fund and our sales tax-based funds, Norman Forward Public Safety Sales Tax, Public Transit Sales Tax, are pretty healthy, relatively speaking, and that is unusual. But our utility funds, particularly our water fund, our wastewater fund, are not at all healthy, and that is unusual. It's usually the other way around. We're usually bemoaning the condition of the general fund, and it's usually the water fund that, you know, we're trying to call on them to help us out, that sort of thing, but it's reversed. It's a tale of two cities. It's weird, it's different. And we'll talk about that theme as we go along throughout the budget process. All of the funds of the city combined, we are projecting that this year will bring in about $261 million. You see the major sources of that $261 million. Sales tax is about 35%. User fees to our utility customers primarily is about 23%. Those are the two biggest individual areas, and you see some others there. The money's coming from the areas that you would think about. On the expenditure side, we're projecting that we'll bring in about 273, or will expand about $273.7 million this year. The money is going where you would expect it to be going. The major areas are in public safety, water, sewer and sanitation, public works. Again, those areas that you would expect, the major expenditure areas of the city because those are the major areas of services that our residents demand. Draw your attention again, though, that we are projecting to bring in $261 million and expand $273 million. That's a loss of $12 million, right? But again, that is a healthy thing because we have been building up some good fund balances, particularly in the general fund, so we are in fact in a position to provide some more services in some targeted areas, drawing down some of those what you might call surplus fund balances, and that is a good thing. Yes, sir.
So just to be clear, too, we're not deficit spending, even though it looks like we're.
We're not deficit spending. We're spending available fund balances and budgeting to expand those available fund balances.
And on our revenue, the fees and charges, that's the.
Primarily that's the utility.
Primarily the utility bills that people pay.
When you're talking to your counterparts and they say, how big is Norman? Interesting question, you know, we can talk population, 130, we can talk square miles, 189, or if they want to know budget, then you have to say, well, the whole thing, it's about $273 million, which is a pretty good-sized organization. Or sometimes they'll say, no, just the general fund, that's about 105 million. So a lot of the answers to a lot of those types of questions just happen in the first couple pages of the budget document to help you kind of measure up where we are compared to everybody else's state.
And again, if you know where to look, you can answer a simple question that is a very common question like that, one page, very quickly.
In public safety, that is just police and fire?
I believe that's police, fire, and emergency response. So there's dispatch services and that sort of thing that are in there also.
And then the strategic support and criminal justice, the criminal.
That's going to be municipal court. I think the city manager is in there also.
That's correct. Finance.
Okay.
So as the city manager talked about, what if you're asked specifically about the general fund? Let's turn our attention to just the general fund. We're projecting this year revenues of $105 million to come into the general fund, and you see that 65% of that money in the general fund is coming, projected to come from sales and use tax. And again, it is extremely important that you explain to your constituents how different this revenue pie chart is in Norman or in any city in Oklahoma than it would be any other place in the country. Any other place in the country, sales and use tax would be about 33%, 35%, 36%. And you'd see about 33%, 35% coming from property tax, and you'd see about 33%, 35% coming from these same other sources. But in Oklahoma cities, we don't get property tax for operations. There's a nice chart in your budget document that shows where your property tax money goes, and more Norman tech district gets more property tax money than the city does, okay? The library gets just as much. The school district and the county get a lot more, and a lot of folks don't understand that. And so when your constituents complain about, complain to you about their property tax bill, you should make it clear to them that that's not the city. We are projecting to spend about $106 million out of the general fund on those major areas that you see there and that you would expect. The largest areas of expenditure in the general fund are for police, public works, and fire. You see that very small little piece over there for finance. Small but mighty.
Mr. City Mayor.
That's a small, small given listed.
Just a line.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Just wanted to point out, too, to our constituents, when they ask about the budget, is that just three departments make up almost 70% of the expenditure.
Of the general fund.
Those three big ones, and those are almost all employee personnel, not stuff. So it's difficult when you talk about, when we have been in a position where we've had to look at budget cuts, it's always, it was a situation, we don't have anything but sal, but people in these three big departments, really. And those are the three departments that are needed the most on day-to-day basis, so it's a good thing we're not in that situation in 2018 anymore.
Just, just keep waiting.
Yeah.
So again, why we're in such a good position in the general fund right now is because our sales and use tax is up, and we've been talking about this in our monthly finance committee meetings. And you'll recall that when we were giving this budget message last year, and we were talking about that, that, my God, what's going on, you know, that big increase in last fiscal year, and we were concerned about, okay, well, is that just a bubble or is it going to burst, and what if it bursts? We were spending a lot of time on that, but so far, it's holding up. Now, it's not continuing to grow at the rate that it was. It's kind of gotten back to a normal growth rate, 2% or so this year, but because we are at a high level and staying flat at a high level, that means that our general fund, which is two-thirds dependent on sales and use tax, is relatively healthy. Okay? So if everybody understands that, now you're a financial expert about the city's general fund, and you can answer your constituents' questions. Just those two charts are really a good picture about what's going on in the general fund. And we talked last year about why this year it's more like, so far, it's holding up. Thank God, you know?
Doesn't matter why. We're just.
Just go with it.
So again, because of that financial health, we're building up some fund balances in the general fund that we estimate to be about $17.9 million at the end of this fiscal year, which is about $14 million in excess of that 3% minimum operational reserve level. That's why we are projecting and recommending in this city manager's proposed budget to add some services in some areas. And we've talked about those areas. We've talked about emphasizing one-time things, and particularly, we'll talk about replacing fleet, that sort of thing, but also increasing our employee compensation, also adding some employees in some targeted areas that council has targeted as priority areas. So you'll see that as we're moving along. Yes, sir.
Should we go back to the previous slide?
Just wanted to make sure everybody got a chance to get a good look at that one, especially the 2017, how significant that was when we were looking at that in the face at the time. And that's the largest drop. I know it doesn't go back to 2008, but I think that was more of a drop than even back then, if I remember.
Yeah, and again, if you, if you ran this chart back to 1975, you would see some ups and downs like that, but it would be within the band that you're talking about here. A really good year, you might be up 6% or up 7%, and in a horrible year, you might be down 3%. But up 7, I mean, I worked in Oklahoma City during the oil boom of the 1980s, and we had some plus sevens, and that was happy days are here again, you know? And I was there in the oil bust, and we had some minus threes and minus fours, and that was gloom and despair, okay? was gloom and despair, okay? But up 20, I mean, that, that unheard of. That's totally unprecedented, okay? Totally unsustainable also. But because we haven't, in a dollar sense, declined from that, we're still growing, although we're not growing at the same rate. We're still growing. So we're healthy.
Before you move on, do we have any indication of what happened in 2017 to cause that negative 3.74?
We had first, a national recession going on.
Right.
We had, the local building sector was in a bid decline. We were very overbuilt from what had been going on with the apartment building booming, that sort of thing, back in 2014 and 2015. And then you had the, the national dot com bust and all of that in 2018 and the real estate bust in 2018.
And that.
And, and, and we, we respond to that in our sales tax revenues, positive or negative, as we talk about here. The building industry is a proxy for what's going on in the local economy. Because again, when the building sector is up, that means, you know, people are still buying their groceries and, you know, you tear your pants, you buy a new pair of pants and that sort of stuff. That's what I call the, the filling of the pie. But I like to think of the building industry as the frosting on the pie. And when the, when the building industry is up, that means that, you know, shingles are getting bought and lumber, lumber's getting bought and bricks are getting bought and that sort of stuff. And that's the, that's the cream on top, okay? So when the building industry is up, our sales tax responds to that as well as our license and permit revenues. So you see that in 2022, we started to decline a bit from that record high level in 2021, but still a very healthy level, historical, of, of growth. And we'll see how that continues in 2023.
We don't build in Norman, Anthony.
Yes, we do.
Oh, well, do we? Oh, can you say that again? We build in Norman.
We do build in Norman.
Oh, my gosh. Amazing.
And, you know, we look at, at the school district's most recent bond success. You get an extra $354 million that will be in the local economy over the next handful of years and what the University of Oklahoma has on the books to construct over the next three or four years. And where lots of parts of the country may see that downward trend, we're kind of anticipating our local economy staying buoyed up a little bit. It's hard to spend half a billion dollars in Norman and not float the boats a little bit higher for everybody. So it's going to be fascinating to watch, to be able to see what the impact can be from public sector spending with voter-approved general obligation bond dollars. It's going to be interesting to watch.
On the revenue side, then, here are the assumptions that we are making to, to get to those projected revenues that you saw. We're projecting a sales tax continued growth of a conservative 2%. We hope to, to stick to that. There are some clouds on the horizon about a national recession and that sort of thing that would affect us. But our projection is a continued slow growth. Same with use tax. We're continuing, right now, we're at about 9.5% this fiscal year. We're projecting next fiscal year to grow at 4%. We hope to exceed that. Where franchise fee projections grow about 3% from where they are this year. They're at a very healthy level this year because of two things. First, there have been some rate increases in the private utilities. And remember, our franchise fees are just based on gross revenues to the private utilities. So we're, we're enjoying that this year and we're projecting a slow growth from that level. Our fines and forfeitures are projected to grow by 3%, but that is from a very low level in the last few years, particularly in '22 and '23. Rhonda has continued to tell me that there's some, some bounce back in that lately and we hope that that'll continue. And again, I'm, I'm just talking about the financial part. I don't, you know, you know, I'm not saying write any tickets or don't write any tickets or whatever. I'm just talking about the money, okay? We did not in, project an increase in room tax revenue or the water rate increase. As you know, there is a water rate increase that will be proposed to the voters in June and a room tax rate increase we voted on in May. But we did not project into the budget success on either of those. If the room tax does in fact pass in May, we'll propose a budget amendment that you vote on, when you vote on the budget. We won't know about the water rate increase in time to include that in the budget, but we'll see how things go. On the expenditure side, and again, these are those long-term projections that you see. We project the salary and benefit category to grow by 5% per year. And a lot of times, people get confused when they look at the fund summary for an individual fund and they see the salary and benefit category of expenditure and understand that that is a fund summary. It is a category of expenditure. It is not just salaries. It's overtime expenditures. It's the employer contribution to healthcare and to retirement, okay, and to life insurance and social security. All of those things are in the salary and benefit category. But again, a lot of those things are tied to wages. So if a cost of living adjustment is given, that means that the employer contribution to healthcare and to retirement is going to increase. And all of those things get built into that assumption. Yes, sir.
So on the bottom part, am I reading that right? Westwood and public transit do not need general fund subsidies this year?
In the current year, we do not project that the public safety sales tax fund will need a subsidy, but that the public transit fund and the Westwood funds will. Public transit is basically because of the increased services that council directed for the microtransit program, those expanded hours and that sort of thing. And Westwood is basically just because of those salary increases applying to Westwood, inflating their costs at a, at a faster rate than their revenues are growing.
And just to be clear, Westwood includes the whole complex, not just the golf course?
Yes, sir. So again, because we were in a fairly good environment, the city manager did grant some wage increases across the board to all city employees. The general fund absorbed them at a fairly significant increased cost, but was in a position to absorb them. And what you see here is those changes to individual positions that were made last fiscal year, mid-year, but implemented in this year's budget. So you see those, again, targeted areas the council had talked about and directed, particularly expansions in the IT area, the community development area and the police and parks areas. Yes, sir.
The auditor position, I know it hasn't been.
Certified?
Certified, I guess, but.
We got communications from the attorney general's office. They asked the city clerk for a couple documents. We provided them a couple documents just here in the last couple of weeks. We expect to open up the envelope any day now and with a congratulations, it's now official. And then we can go out and fly the internal auditor position and.
Yeah. And notice that this is the audit technician that was eliminated. The auditor position is in the budget. This is the, the staff person to that auditor that was eliminated during last fiscal year.
And then that, the auditor, then they could, in future budget, request if they want a technician.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Not to get into the weeds and politics too much, but can we talk a little bit about why homeless coordinator, technician, outreach, all that stuff was closed out?
We actually shifted some of those duties and responsibilities to the housing authority in our, I'm trying to remember the name of the position, the housing navigator. And all the work is being done. It's just being done, we think, in a, in the most effective way possible.
Perfect. Thank you.
And I think in parks, that, that's, that was contracted out as, as opposed to having part-time staff.
Gotcha. And we were having a tough time keeping part-time staff on hand. And with the contract, the services getting performed, the people change, but it's not a constant hiring hamster wheel for us to stay on.
Makes sense. I believe.
Yeah, I was just curious about that. So three of those were people that quit, right? The outreach case, outreach housing, outreach coordinator?
Yes.
It's a health technician part of the people that quit, but.
Yeah. So instead of bringing those people back inside, we just shifted funding to provide the service externally.
Yes, sir.
With the, on the added position side, how many of those have actually been filled, do you think?
Tim, your database manager.
Is, is filled?
Yes.
And victims advocate chief. Do we have that body on? And I know we got the animal welfare tech and the adoption coordinator.
Adoption coordinator still in process.
Got it. And golf operations manager, I believe we brought that.
Yep.
Onboard. So most of those folks are up and with us. IT, long-range planner, Jane's working on a strategy. We've, we've, man, we have been beating the bushes for a long-range planner. So what we'll wind up with, we think, is a scenario. She'll have two planner ones and two planner twos. And we'll recast the net and hope we can land, we had one, made the offer, accepted the offer, moved in here from out of state and before the ink was dry on their lease agreement, decided, I'm going to go to work for Oklahoma City instead. After we spent, you know, 90 days going through this process and the dance to hook them and reel them in. It's been a challenge.
Police position, patrol positions, are those, they're funded? Are we still trying to fill them?
We're still hiring. It has picked up. The recruiting side of that has definitely picked up due to some action council has did in the past and then some changes we've made internally, I think, has helped our recruiting. Picking up. We've got some, next year, we should add quite a few.
How many is that, chief, do you think, just projected?
I think over this next year, we'll add about 26 positions.
Excellent.
Not added, but we're just.
26 positions. Not all are street patrol officers, though, or is it the whole department? 26.
Oh, that's just, that's patrol. That's commissioned officers. We'll still add communications people and others.
So here are some positions that are proposed to be added in the general fund in the proposed 24 budget. The assistant city manager position that council had talked about, basically as an intergovernmental relations liaison person. An assistant city attorney in the city attorney's office, additional staff in the IT area, construction manager in the, in the building management in the parks department and also a part-time person in the recreation division.
The parks building management, we, we look at, and it probably doesn't happen this way, you know, in Oklahoma City with the maps program, but we have one of the few city clerks in all of the state of Oklahoma that is responsible for rebuilding, you know, the city hall campus. Now we have a police chief who's in charge of building an emergency operations center. So everybody gets an assignment. We have outside help that we pay to support our project managers and we reached the conclusion that we think we'll be dollars ahead actually bringing in that professional. And we can take the burden off each one of the departments that winds up with the, the gift of a, a new facility. And then you realize, now I got to become a construction, you know, management expert. So we do think we will, will wind up being dollars ahead, having that building management professional in-house.
Yes, ma'am.
I know that we've talked about this in previous years and we did talk about this in finance several months ago about how many position requests come through the leadership team when you're trying to figure out who's going to be added into the budget. How many positions were requested in that process this year?
Kim may have her spreadsheet handy. Usually Tim wins because he gives us a horror story about some external force taking over our computer system. Everybody votes for Tim because we don't want to let him have.
Tim wins the approvals, but Tim doesn't win the requests.
Yeah, Kim's got the backside, all the detail and all those requests.
I can see her counting.
Behind the scenes, we have a reward each year for the most unjustified position request. We don't, we don't publish that.
I don't know that we had any unjustified.
75 were requested. Okay, 75. So I just want, I guess, our community to understand how lean we are on the city staff side. Like that is, every department is understaffed. So, you know, we're getting six positions out of 75. So when you call city hall, when you call to talk to our utilities, like, be kind to them and patient. I got some not-so-great emails to some city staff today that I got copied on and I would just like to remind people that they are here serving the public every single day and doing it with less than what we should be giving them based on the budget that we have and the size of our city. So let's just remember that.
And we appreciate that note, Councilmember Schuler, and, and the balancing act that we go through, like the struggles we're having in community development right now, keeping planning professionals onboard, it's, it's what do we need to do to be competitive in salaries and benefits? And what do we need to do to bring on enough support so the workload is bearable? And throughout the course of the fiscal year, we may have opportunities to add some additional bodies. Good news is when we go through the exercise with the 75 bodies requested, they, they have been evaluated. Everybody's kind of ranked, you know, who really needs the most help next? And we can bring you recommendations to add bodies if those revenue projections continue to hold and look positive.
So, the assistant city manager and assistant city attorney, would you expect that adding this position might save on outside, expanding, or having to spend on outside legal help?
To some degree, yes. It really depends on what kind of litigation we have. So we pulled our, our numbers going back to 2018 and it's easy to see the years where we had litigation that we couldn't handle in-house. We have zoning cases in 2021 and 2022 that cost quite a bit of money for outside. Other things, we would still probably continue to go outside and get help with, but they're not incredibly expensive. We use outside counsel for some employment matters because in our office, we represent the employees and, and different issues. And so when you get into a discipline area issue or, or a grievance, things like that, it's, it's better to bring in outside counsel so it's not the same people that are then later working to defend the city and something else. So we, we look at each of those and we really try to manage that. We've done well, except with the exception of 2018 when it was Center City and UMP TIP. We were heavy in all that. And then when we had our zoning cases, other than that, we're, we've been trying to save money coming in, in on the budget and that has been my goal, is saving this position.
And those internal service processes like the city attorney's office, when it comes to the evaluation of the requests, every department recognizes that our ability to move faster, we, we only want to move faster if we're moving faster legally. So we all want all of our contracts reviewed by the city attorney's office and, and everybody saw great value in being able to speed some of the, I mean, we're dealing with a whole lot of interesting issues right now. So support in, in the city attorney's office helps us move a little quicker.
Okay. And on the assistant city manager, I know most cities our size have one and maybe most cities half our size have one, too. So what, I know one of the things when we hired you, that was something, I, I think it was a deal breaker for other candidates that interviewed, but for you, you had indicated you could handle it at the time without one and that that could be better used for something else. We've, we've grown a lot since 2019 when we hired you. So what, what do you envision that position? How does that work with you?
Couple of things. Thing one, the ability to be monitoring and paying close attention to published agendas from all of our public agencies inside Cleveland County and then our. from all of our public agencies inside Cleveland County and then our neighboring public agencies. What is it that they're working on agenda-wise? What do we need to be aware of to make sure we're not moving towards conflict? And as, as we were talking about some projects and, you know, one of the, the things going through this particular budget development process, recognizing there are things we're doing internally, like a litter removal program that was housed in Public Works, a general fund function. And we were spending general fund money on litter removal. And we reached the conclusion that, well, litter pickup sounds like a solid waste kind of a function. And we talked about, well, there's a nonprofit in Oklahoma City that picks up day labor and then they do litter cleanup on behalf of the city of Oklahoma City. Well, I reach out to the city manager and he sends me the contact information. And I thought, who do I have that I can say, "Get on this program, bring us the details. Let's set up a meeting with this nonprofit to see if they would be willing to expand services in Norman." And I rely on a lot of professionals. Do you have 10 minutes in your week that I can squeeze this onto your plate? You know, Sarah Kaplan picks up a lot of these weird left-field kind of a requests. But we will have a body in-house to say, "I need you to go meet with this group in Oklahoma City and try to enhance them to, you know, entice them to come over here and do services for us."
And that position would, would be the city manager if you were absent?
Yes, and so, right now, we, you know, we assign that responsibility based on whose calendar is available. And it would, yeah, it would just make it more certain for council, you know, who to call when I'm out of town on vacation, which isn't that often, but it happens, so.
Thanks, Daryl.
Want to turn some attention to an area of emphasis for the surplus, if you will. And again, council has talked about a lot of the fact that we are concerned about this surplus being a bubble. So, spending it on one-time things, capital things, like building C and municipal complexes that you appropriated money for, those sorts of things. But we wanted to have some emphasis on fleet replacements. You'll recall that about five or six years ago, Mike White is here, he could probably give you the exact date. But we did a fleet study. And that fleet study recommended for a fleet our size, and it talked about the size of the fleet as also. But for a fleet our size, we should be spending about $6 million per year on fleet replacement. Our fleet replacement is funded out of our dedicated capital sales tax. That's seven-tenths of a percent of sales tax that is accounted for in the capital fund. And we use some of that money to replace fleet. We usually allocate about half of about $4 million that's coming in per year for capital outlay things to fleet replacements. So, that's about $2 million per year that we usually have for fleet replacement. But the things that we are buying with that $2 million of fleet replacement, which is a pretty fixed number, are costing more and more each year. And I'm talking about police cars. And Shawna Leary and myself, or these old crusty, you know, public works guys, I used to work in street maintenance and we're saying, "I used to, I used to be able to buy a motor grader for $30,000." You know, police cars used to cost $18,000. Well, I mean, just in the last four years, look at the inflation in the cost of a police car.
Yeah, that's nice.
And again, our fleet management shop does a really good job of keeping the price down, but also making sure that we have the, the equipment that we need at the level that we need to do the job. So, police car now is costing $83,000 for one police car with the suspension systems and all of that. Was that a question?
About that, just if we have any reason, or do we know why police cars specifically have gone up that much in a short time?
I would say it's not just police cars.
Sure, it's everything, yeah.
That's just the easiest example that I could show because we, we have some police cars every year. But the cost of a grader has gone from $30,000 to $300,000.
Garbage trucks, street sweepers, insanely expensive for what, you know, what you think this machine does.
Those are already hundreds of thousands anyway. I'm worrying about these smaller vehicles where they, such a leap in such a short time.
Police have to be custom-made, like for the console and everything, the cage, like, there's a million things, Chief, that goes into specifically just to them.
So, because that fixed or so $2 million was becoming less and less adequate to, to meet the needs of our replacement budget, what the manager's proposed budget is recommending is a one-time general fund supplement of about $3 million for fleet replacement. And, and that is enabling us to recommend to replace two more fire trucks and a big tandem dump truck and a big tree chipper in the Parks Department, just, you know, some heavy equipment. $3 million does not go as far as it used to, but $3 million makes a dent. And it's a help, and that's what we're recommending to do.
And on the note related to fleet, and I'm glad Mike White's here, they went through an exercise that I'm not sure all agencies go through, but it was an exercise in right sizing the fleet, where do we have vehicles that are being underutilized? And how, how can we take advantage of current underutilized equipment to get the most out of it for our taxpayers? And the ability to move some of our vehicles into a fleet pool. So, like a department will have access to three vehicles instead of every single person having a vehicle assigned and then none of them get driven very much. So, we wound up, and I'm trying to remember the numbers, that report came out just a couple of days ago in, in all of the, the fleet movement. But monumental task undertaken by our fleet supervisor, Mike White, and the Public Works crew. All the, they met with all the departments and tell me what you're using this vehicle for and how can we get, you know, more efficiency out of it. But I'll send you a copy of that report, fascinating to watch, and just so you recognize the level of professionalism, making sure we're getting the best bang for taxpayers' dollar.
Did we look in that at changing out vehicles from gasoline-powered to EVs? And is that not part of that?
A lot of the new fleet coming in, where we used to, you know, buy a pickup truck with a V8, and now it's a V6 hybrid. And Mike shocks me, and he's a car guy, and you can appreciate it. You know, he used to change oil every 3,000 miles. Well, the new hybrid V6 with an electric motor component to it changed the oil now about every 10,000 miles. It, it, so always looking for the efficiency. And when you step on the gas pedal, you can't tell it's not a V8 under the hood. It'll pull a trailer and, you know, do all the things all of our departments need with that equipment. Now, it's not any cheaper, but our maintenance interval is stretched out, which means we can, we can do more with the limited number of fleet maintenance people we have in the space that we've got. So, we are looking at electric vehicles. We had the guys from Canoe bring over an electric vehicle for us to look at. We think they will be very cost-competitive compared to an internal combustion engine vehicle. And a whole bunch of our vehicles never leave city limits. So, we think we will have wonderful applications for segments of our fleet to be electric vehicles. We're always working on grants for charging stations and all that kind of stuff. And of course, our transit fleet, it's good that we get a grant for $1 million for an electric bus because that's about what they cost. So, we're definitely deep into the research. And, you know, we'll take them in small chunks, see how they hold up in real-world environments compared to, you know, the existing internal combustion fleet.
Thank you. The new, new police cars are hybrids, all of them or?
Everyone who bought this year are hybrids, and the ones for next year will be hybrids.
And the V6 hybrid or the V8 hybrid?
V6, V6. In the pickups and in the SUVs.
Excellent.
So, this is a summary of what we've just talked about in the, in the best of times, if you will, where those target areas are, that we're recommending to, to add some things, that we're recommending to increase some salaries and plain compensation, and then that fleet management supplement.
Best of times.
That's the best of times.
Wait for the other shoe to drop.
The other shoe's not gonna drop until the enterprise one's started.
Save that time, save that channel.
Yeah, I'm gonna let Nathan and Chris talk about that, you know.
I'll make sure to bring my rotten tomatoes that night.
Just wanna clarify, I guess, one more time that the personal changes that we had in fiscal year '23 are, we've already said that we're doing those things, but we're implementing them in '24. So, when we see these other things, this is not like another, you know, we're not duplicating the things that we've already done. It's just they're being.
It's just they're putting into the budget.
Just so that the public understands that when they see, you know, police and patrol, like, we did that last year, but then they'll actually come online this year.
Yeah, the example like the, the adoption coordinator, where, you know, the decision was made during the course of last fiscal year to add that position after the budget was adopted. So, now it's getting added to the budget. So, now let's move to some of those special revenue funds. The first one of them being the public safety sales tax fund. And again, it is not 66% sales tax. It's, the revenues in the public safety sales tax fund are 95% sales tax. Usually, that's a bad thing to be that dependent on sales tax. But since sales tax is relatively healthy, the public safety sales tax fund is relatively healthy. So, this year's budget recommends to add those two dispatcher positions that we have been needing to add since the public safety sales tax ordinance was adopted back in 2015. We have been behind schedule on that, and we have been waiting on the new emergency communications facility to be built. But because it's nearing, it will be complete during fiscal year '24, we're proposing to add those two dispatcher positions now. And I call them dispatchers, I think their term is communication officer or something, but you know what I'm talking about. Yes, sir.
So, just to be clear, too, that we haven't been able to fill those positions because we don't have any space to add them in the basement. And we need to wait for the EOC to be done. But the public safety sales tax committee has recommended.
For a long time.
Not doing the EOC until it can be fully funded.
That's correct.
And so, now it is fully funded and we're building it and we'll be able to.
And recall that you, you use a lot of the ARPA money to supplement the budget from the public safety sales tax, supplement that with the ARPA money so that we could build it properly as we've wanted to do all along. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, EOC done in '24. I remember having discussions about a manager position. And I guess this would be the time to be talking about it again.
Yeah, so, we were talking about, in there are a couple of different models in terms of how emergency management personnel operate in, in just our neighboring communities. It's done a little bit different. It, it, we operate the way we are over an accumulation of decisions made from, you know, 1960 till current. But we will actually have, you know, a new base of operations for emergency services. And, and we've had internal conversations about, does it improve our recruitment and retention for our communications officers if they are members of emergency operations center staff as opposed to either police or fire personnel? So, the public safety study that'll be underway will, will help try to craft what we think the, the long-term organizational charts look like for police and fire and how that emergency operations function fits in between the two.
So, we won't be looking at an emergency manager position?
We have an emergency manager. And right now, I mean, the person you don't see very frequently, they're involved heavily in our ability to comply with FEMA rules and regulations after the tornado and making sure we've got all of our costs identified to see if we'll be eligible and that kind of thing. We think in the future, the ability to say, you know, it's, it's a game day coming up and maybe April 29th is the, the first real preview of what an SEC home environment looks like when you got Music Fest and a big concert going on all at the same time. Could that function in EOC actually be the coordinator? Because it's, it's not just police and fire, but it's also how do we get ambulances in and out and all that kind of stuff? So, we're, we're, we're on it. And we think there's gonna be some great data coming to us that'll help craft a recommendation on how that may go forward.
But not before we get to the end of this?
And if, if we do, because the EOC will be open in the next fiscal year, what month do we anticipate right now? EOC completion?
Probably the midsummer next year, toward the end of this next fiscal year.
Yeah, so, we won't have a whole lot of time in it before the next fiscal year is done. But we'll have all of the needs, we think, identified before then. So, the following budget, I think, will be the perfect opportunity to restructure.
Yes, sir.
So, after, after the EOC is finished, besides personnel, will be done with all the PSST projects except for the Fire Station 5?
All of the critical capital needs except the Fire Station 5. We will still be short of the school resource offices.
But the projects that will be finished, once Fire Station 5 will be the last one we need to get done. But, but after that, the voter-approved PSST projects will be completed.
And of course, the, the public safety study to take into consideration, you know, Turnpike or not? And if so, where? And how does that influence where Station 5 relocation will take place? So, we do see the need for a Station 5 relocation, but its exact location, we think, will be determined going through this exercise.
Now, that's, the Turnpike stuff's in even more limbo now. We have no clue. We don't even know what the route is anymore, even if it were to happen because they got rejected, I guess, out there. So, would we, wouldn't be delaying our public safety assessment to wait? Because it could be years.
Right, no, I mean, we, we will probably wind up saying with or without. Here's, here's the things council may consider.
When does that, when do y'all anticipate that public safety study to be finished?
Chief, RFP date?
Legal is looking over it one last time. Fire had just added one more thing to it, and that should be done soon, and we'll get it out to bid.
Should be out, yeah.
Bid on it.
In the streets in May.
Four weeks.
In the streets in May, okay.
And then it takes a year?
Well, I don't know. I don't think it'll take that long.
Yeah, I think, I'll bet you we'll have answers in six months.
Oh.
Here is a summary of some things. We touched on the ARPA allocation that you did for the Emergency Communications Center. These are the major things that you have allocated or programmed funds for. $6.4 million for affordable housing. $3 million for the Lower Imhoff Creek project that I think is in design. Nonprofit support of $1.9 million, the incubator, arts and humanities support, and the vaccination incentive. So, again, all of those things are ongoing. Remind you that we have to spend that money by fiscal, by, by end of '26, or we have to repay it to the federal government, so.
Well, I was gonna ask, what do we have outstanding to appropriate? Because we've done the EOC, that's in design or going, going out to bid soon. If we're doing the design work on the Lower Imhoff Creek stabilization, that's gonna get ready to be expended. We've done our nonprofit support. Is that all of that money out the door?
All that money is out the door, yes.
I'm seeing yeses back there. The NADC incubator, that's out.
Yeah, the only thing that's really.
Is affordable housing.
Is affordable housing, yes.
I guess, where are we on that piece of land?
As I just turned to look at Catherine, due diligence period is nearing completion.
Yes, yeah, we're waiting on the survey. And I think we're anticipating a, and that date on, I think it's, is it May 2nd, Brenda? That Anthony talked to you about?
May, may.
May night.
Night, whatever, the first meeting in May, May night.
Bring that date back to you all.
Okay.
Yeah. Very close.
So, we're doing pretty good, yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're better off than most cities, I'll put it that way. That doesn't stop me, though, for me.
I know, I know. I'm gonna spend that money.
Mr. Mayor, there's been a request for a break in the action for five minutes.
Let's take a break. Is that easy? Were you in the middle of a question?
No.
Okay, good.
Okay, good.
Tax Fund and another one.
Hold on. Brenda, what'd you do to the audio?
I just, I muted him, sorry.
Did he give us a thumbs up?
Yep.
All right, we are resumed.
Good, okay. Moving then to the Room Tax Fund, which is another of the special revenue funds where there's some action in this budget year. Again, there is a proposed rate increase for the room tax rate from 5% to 8%. That will be voted on on May the 9th. We don't know what the outcome of that vote will be at this point, but if it does pass on May the 9th, we will have time to prepare a budget amendment for the Room Tax Fund that you will consider with the final budget adoption on June the 13th. The projections are that that 60%, if you will, rate increase will bring in about $975,000 or 75% to Visit Norman and about $325,000 additionally to the Norman Arts Council. So again, that's a, that's a significant increase. And keep our fingers crossed and we'll see how it goes. But again, the budget as is presented right now does not assume that that revenue will be included.
And when we see Visit Norman, we're talking the sports commission?
Yes, that is under the, yeah, our contractors with Visit Norman. They will, they will have a sports commission. So some of the other special revenue funds that are included in the budget but that there are no major big increases are the Clean Fund, the Council on Law Enforcement and Education. We talked about the de-emphasis on services to individuals experiencing homelessness in the CDBG Fund. In the Seizures and Restitution Fund, we did have, we did include what was talked about in the Finance Committee of that additional fleet replacement supplement from the seizures fund of about $1.4 million for police vehicle replacements. And that enabled us to replace a lot more vehicles in the other areas because we were not replacing any police cars out of the capital outlet allocations. So we got basically about $1.4 million further down the list for every other department because we're replacing the police vehicles out of the seizures fund. The Public Transit Fund, as we touched on, has about a $700,000 subsidy from the General Fund for the Micro Transit Services. No real news in the Art and Public Places Fund or the Westwood Park Fund, yes, ma'am.
Can you explain the de-emphasis on services for individuals experiencing homelessness? Is that just that we've removed those positions?
From the city, from the city CDBG Fund.
So that's, that's all tied together. It's not that we're saying that we are, you know, we don't care about this, that we're not trying to address it, like I just want to make sure that.
It's not budgeted in the city CDBG funding.
And the new emphasis on the affordable housing piece, which is definitely in the wheelhouse of CDBG.
Perfect.
That's really all for me this evening. Here is the schedule going forward for the additional public hearings and budget study sessions where the remainder of the city manager's proposed budget will be presented to you on May the 2nd. We will see the capital fund budgets. On May the 16th, the enterprise fund budgets, that's the worst of times.
Just before election, no?
Good. We'll have the second public budget hearing on May the 23rd. And then on June the 13th, the council will consider the budget for adoption. At the upcoming April and May Finance Committee meetings, we will discuss budget amendments that have come before us as staff to be prepared. So if you have anything that you would like removed from the budget or added to the budget that, that includes finances, please let us know. We'll cast those things out, we'll prepare budget amendment language for you. And again, it will be up to you to, to vote to add or take those things away from the budget. Would, would remind you that where it's in the capital fund, if you're proposing to add something, remember that the amount available for additional programs in the capital fund is in the negative. So if you're proposing to add something, you really need to propose something to give up. And I would just remind you of those things.
And, and two things on that calendar. One, the 13th is election night for the water rate increase and as.
What's the plan that wages happening?
Yeah. Yeah, not, not necessarily a strategy, but also we'll remind council that council set a, a process in motion for that budget adoption night to happen earlier in the day. And I think we started at 1:30 last year, Mr. Francisco, if I recall.
I think this will be the first year that we're going to do that. But yeah, that's, that's what we talked about.
Started at 2, I think.
We did it last year.
Yeah, so we, we would anticipate following that same protocol unless otherwise directed. Kim, thank you. Jacob?
Thank you, Kim.
Well done. Appreciate you guys.
All right.
Yep.
So we have like another.
Did we last time?
Yeah, well, we, we, yeah, we got later that night.
So the talks are about your early and then the regular meeting in the evening. So it's not compounded.
We thought it might just go right up to it, but we actually had time in between.
Yeah, that.
We got everybody.
That should click with me.
Oh, is Michelle?
Yes, you made it.
Item number two, discussion regarding the electric vehicle charging stations planning for the municipal complex. Michelle, you got the, you got the floor.
Oh, boy.
Funny how this came up during our.
Didn't it?
Yeah.
And I'm glad that, that they used the words unprecedented as well. So I'm going to use that too. Anyway, today I'm going to talk to you a little bit about the EV charging stations that we were talking about putting here at City Hall. Just to remind you of kind of going on with this a little bit before, but just to hit some highlights, in '95 is when ACOG did the Clean Cities Coalition. We started in Norman, thank you Mike, really a leader on this kind of thing. In '08 with the fuel conservation policy, that includes like, we're not allowed to idle in city vehicles, carpooling, that kind of thing. The alternative fuel program, you know, we're talking about being ahead of the curve. This is definitely one that was ahead of the curve. It allowed us at the beginning to look at CNG, but it was written so that we can look at all types of alternative fuel, not just the CNG, not just EV, anything new that might come to. We have the CNG fueling station, it's an amazing facility. In 2018, your ECAB came up with new recommendations or updates to the, the climate protection agreement. But then in 2018, we did Ready for 100. And then in 2019, the DQ started distributing money for the Volkswagen grants and we got some money for that. So Florence's Solar put in EV charging stations. We now have electric buses and EV charging infrastructure up at North Base. And we did the EV charging ordinance, if you recall, to allow the city manager to set pricing and that was in December of '22. And here are the grants I kind of mentioned, the Volkswagen grants. We had one from the Federal Transportation Authority. ACOG has been very generous. And the one I'm talking about tonight is the one listed at the bottom, the City, City Hall Charging Project. Here is actually a look at what the plan is or the design. The original piece, this is at the front, over there, over there, at City Hall, where the lovely sign is, thank you, I'm terribly directionally challenged. It was 13 parking spaces. It's, it is designed down to 12 because the charging apparatus would require one space to go. This is actually a picture of it overlaid on the actual parking spaces that are there. And this was our original estimate. So when we started planning this project in '21 and with the, going for the CMAC grant, that's the ACOG grant program. Originally with ABB, which is an EV unit supplier, previous experience with them, we thought it would be about $246,000 and our match would be 60% or about 24 and a half percent of the cost. But unprecedented and we were wrong. Reality came and it smacked us in the face and it wasn't 246, it was 368, $158. So the grant still is only for 186. That would increase our match instead of 60, it would be 182,000. That's instead of a 24 and a half percent match, it's a 49 and a half percent match. That's a hundred, almost 123,000 over what we had said we would do. So there's the bad news, I'm sorry. I like to bring good news, I like to be cheerful and fun, unfortunately sometimes, right? Why? Why did this happen? That's huge. And it is. And typically, I don't think this would have been this outrageously off the mark, unprecedented. We keep saying that, but it's true, right? Supply chain issues, you guys have been hearing that nonstop since 2020. Inflation, of course, crazy rise. The size of our project, we only need two chargers, that's a problem. Because, well, that's small, do I want to waste my time bidding on your project? So that's, that ends to the lack of vendors. This graph that I have here is actually the rise in infrastructure installation through 2022. And it didn't decrease for this year. What they're projecting is just the same increase. So that, that's another piece. So what are our options? Well, you guys could appropriate the money, the extra $123,000 and then the project proceeds as we thought, will be done in August 2024 and we receive the 186,000 reimbursement from ACOG. Or you guys don't appropriate the money. Project ends, without further word, no ACOG reimbursement. We have spent about $13,000 on engineering services already, but we could reapply next year. I did talk to ACOG, they did say that they expected a large sum of money again for next year. So there is a good opportunity or a good chance that it could get funded next year. It's just, what do you guys want to do? Yes, so gosh, I don't know who went first.
I'm short, so you don't, there's no knowing if we get 186,000 next year. Like they could get a sizable, but it could still be like 86,000 instead of 186.
Typically, they're not going to fund under 75% of a project. Typically, they're looking for matches about 25, 26%. So what, if we apply and we are granted money, it will be 75, 76% of what we asked for.
Updated project numbers.
Correct.
Right, Michelle.
Correct, it would be the updated new amounts. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
So that was my question too, are we, would we be expected to get more? But my question is, if we don't do it now, what is the potential for the overall project increase over a year from now?
So I'm glad you asked that, those are some of the thoughts I put on the paper. It's a good question. So let's talk about what do we see coming. Yeah, I don't, you know.
Yeah.
But inflation rate, it's decreasing. It's not at 7% anymore, it's probably going to go down 5, 6, whatever. But that's still inflation and certain costs are still going to increase. Steel, concrete, labor, those kinds of things, they're still going to go up. I expect the per unit cost of a unit, of an actual charging unit to decrease and that was the largest increase. The units themselves went from 136,000, bid, or quote, to 210,000. So that was the largest increase in price. I could see that starting to decrease, but, you know, I can tell you how much and I don't know when. And why am I saying that? Because there are things to know. This administration has deter, the federal. This administration has deter, the federal government, that, this administration has decided that they want to push electric vehicles as a way to help combat some of the climate change issues. So their goal is to have 50% of all vehicles sold in the United States to be electric vehicles by 2030. That's what they're pushing for, that's where they're dedicating the resources, education, et cetera. Also, the bipartisan infrastructure law, that's pumping in $7.5 billion this year for EV charging projects. So, and then the $7,500 tax credit that people can get if they buy an EV car, that's been extended also through 2030.
Poker hand.
Yeah, no, I'm just trying to understand kind of the benefits of potentially, you know, reapplying. We could get more money and more match money from ACOG. And it's seeming like they're gonna have that available next year. And we have a better idea of what the cost might be. But, I'm looking at Anthony's looking over. No, I'm not asking you to project anything, I'm just thinking like, we need an extra $122,000.
So.
If you chose to appropriate that, you could, is that your question?
Yes, do we have that, because we have the surplus and all this kind of stuff. And this is a one-time expense too, and so I feel like that would go with the things that you've been telling us to think about.
And before I jump to you, Mr. Peacock, I would also say that I have been talking to other departments and division folks in our city who are also interested in doing EV charging infrastructure if we could come up with the money. So what am I saying there? What I'm saying is there could be more, yes.
Next year.
Right.
If we, if we go forward with this one, then we could potentially get more money to do more EV charging stations in the future, which I think is really important. So if that's the opportunity.
And I asked OGNB, how many electric vehicles were in Cleveland County? And they came up with the number 56. And I don't know how she got that, I don't know where that came from. But that was how many were registered by tag here. So the question is, you know, is it worth it, is it worth it to do? Now, if we go to canoe, kind of pickups and things like that, there's obvious use for it right out there.
Well, I'm thinking too, like, as we expand our own fleet into EV, there's also a potential for the city to be able to utilize some of those charging stations as well. So it's not just the public, but also the route that we're going with our own city fleet.
You know, in that situation, the timing works wonderfully, that the stations are available, you know, during daylight hours for the public and at night when we're off shift, that's when we plug all the cars in and go home. So they get a lot of use, I think, as the EV alternatives start to become more realistic.
Where is the closest charging station to this location?
The street parking lot?
Yeah, okay, just trying to think about like where.
There's two spots?
So.
But there's a concentration of.
I think two boxes, four cars could charge at once.
And there's how many, one or two?
So at the municipal, yes. Oh, does it work?
Yeah, there came. You have to move it onto the screen.
Thank you, sir. No, I'm not good with technology, sorry. I like to be outside. Anyway, here, yes, here is the municipal parking lot. And there are two chargers there, two, two sets of two. There are some over here at Robinson Crossing. We also have at Rudy's. Don't forget, we have, we have a public charging facility at the CNG facility too. Wait, Mr. Peacock, do you have?
Yeah, a couple of questions. I think, the first one, I think you've already answered, but I just want to clarify. So the 186,000 grant, was that a number we came up with or was that, was ACOG was offering that amount?
So that's what they offered us, yes.
Okay, that's not 75% of what.
It's, it's seven, it is, yes, they offer, yes, okay, so let me explain. We determined that we could match 76.4%, or 24.4%. And then they offered, they offered us that.
Okay, so if we were to go back next year.
Based on our projections.
So if we go back next year, our 75% that we're gonna ask for is substantially larger. Okay. Do we have any kind of use data or statistics on these existing chargers or how much?
We do not, because they're not actually our chargers. Except for the one at North Base, but it just got put into service.
Is that proprietary data, that they would be willing to share with the company? Or is that?
I don't know, I could ask.
I'd just like to know.
Because I don't know, but that's a good question, I'm happy to ask.
It'd give us a really good indicator of how much we're using these right now and expansion of the program is worth it.
No, that makes sense. I'm happy.
Appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
So are we being, are we being paid to allow them on our parking lot?
So we did get a base, do you remember how much that was? We got a chunk of money when we put them in.
If I remember right, we were working on that and then Francis Solar was working on a statewide project. So rather than us applying, be a small piece of that, Francis was putting in thousands of these through the state. So what we did is those agreements we have with those landowners, we basically partnered with Francis to do that, and they put the chargers in and the city paid like a minimal fee, eight, nine thousand dollars for what they called a marketing fee. And then I think for 15 years, we get like a 10 or 15% discount if we buy electricity for our city fleet.
So we don't necessarily get like a monthly fee for hosting it in our parking lot?
Sounds no.
Do the plugins, are they universal to any electric vehicles?
They're universal except Tesla. Tesla's proprietary.
I was about to say.
Everybody else uses the same one.
I was gonna say, I think there's more than 56 Teslas in Cleveland County.
That's exactly, the ones that we were looking at would have adapters so that it would light.
Yeah, I think, I think there are more than.
There's more Teslas than Priuses in Norman.
There are, there are.
There's probably more than 50 Teslas in Norman, I would guess.
There are a lot.
Definitely in Cleveland County. So that's what I'll make sure that we're able to.
No, absolutely, right. Yes, sir.
When do we have to make a decision on this?
Soon.
Before our next council meeting?
Tonight.
So we have this as a component of the next round of projects for the municipal complex. It was an alternate in that. So if this is something we want to discuss further, we can allow that to continue to move forward and we could just always go back and rebid if we needed to. But this is a hard bid number that we actually have from a contractor.
Right.
That will slow, if we don't make a decision tonight, will impede progress on the municipal complex.
What's the cycle of reapplying to ACOG? Like, when does that go in, when could we potentially, like, is it a full year or is it?
January.
It's actually coming up toward the end of the year, so it'll be October.
October.
Okay, so we've got it.
You're back in February usually, I guess.
We heard that quicker this time. So it's not even really a full year and we could know, and so like, there's a gamble on potential cost, but we could recoup more money.
Yeah, what was that, what was that total number, 300 and?
368.
And we have 188.
186.
We could potentially save 90, 90,000.
I mean, that's not nothing.
That's what I was trying to figure out.
We wanted to give you guys, we were getting budget estimates, but we wanted to give you guys a hard numbers before we brought this back to.
100%. It was a shock. This is the first one of these that I've ever been a part of, and it was very interesting. I learned a lot, I've learned a lot. That's good, that's a plus, that's a positive.
I don't know, maybe I'll just stick my neck out and say, based on the timeline of being able to go back to ACOG and get more money, since it's not like us waiting the whole year, it's waiting until a couple of months, six months maybe, until we can apply and then we'll find out in February. I think it's, yeah, it's not insignificant, it's not an insignificant amount of money. And since there's a charging station across the street, basically, it's not like we're creating something that doesn't already exist right here in this vicinity. So I'd like to see us punt.
You'd like to see us do what?
Punt.
I would agree.
Yeah, I'm in the same boat, because even if, so next year, assuming prices stay the same, our match would be $90,000, which is still half of that. So even if our share goes up another $90,000, we're still, I don't say in the green, but we're not in the red.
Right.
Some of what we're in right now.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, there's not a whole lot to be gained. Gosh, that's tough. That's tough. I'd love to see the project happen, but.
No, sure. 100%, but, you know, you make great points, too.
It's a fiduciary trust, you know, I've got a responsibility here.
Our public service.
And that preserves council member Holman's favorite parking spot for at least.
Darryl parks in my spot.
I just keep it warm for him until council meeting night.
Well, see, that's, that spot's just where the mayor parked before, before Bria. It wasn't official, that's just where Rosenthal parked for whatever reason. And then Bria got her own, got her own sign.
So with consensus, we will punt. And the good news is, we got that application down to a sign, so in October, it's about a 10-minute exercise.
It probably, my cue.
If we're successful with the grant, we're not out any of those engineering funds either.
Exactly.
Exactly, that was the point.
Nice, okay, good, good.
And that was, that's a good-sized chunk. And that's not gonna age.
Right.
There's not many changes gonna happen out there.
Anything else from council? Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Anything else from council? Favorite word?